Welcome you to our political candidate debate. We are making coffee, we apologize that it is not ready, so as soon as it is ready, we might take just a brief break for anyone that want to get a cup of coffee or a little snack. I also would like to take this time that if there are any other elected officials that are in our audience, if you just stand so that we can recognize that you are here. And we welcome you. I also have a letter that I would like to read to the Hope County Chamber of Commerce Reference Candidate Debate from William Brownie Brown, Republican candidate for the County Commissioner. With all due respect, I would like to decline the invitation to participate in this debate. With all fairness to the candidates running in March primary, I would like to relinquish my time at this debate. Good luck to all the candidates and God bless Hope County and God bless the USA. William Brownie Brown, Republican candidate for County Commissioner. Also like to announce Mr. James Allen, who is running for District Attorney, he is in court and he is trying his best to get out of court and get here. So we hope he will be here by the time it is time for their debate, okay? With that all being said, I now turn it over to Ms. Marcia Long, who is with San Hope Early Community College, and she will give us the outline of this debate.
Hi, as she said, I'm Marcia Long, the Director of Speech and Debate at San Hope Early College High School, and I'm happy to have the Captain and President of our debate team, James Mitten, James, if you would stand. James is a Congressional Debater, and so he's used to being parliamentary, doing parliamentary at precedent, so he's actually going to moderate with my assistants, so we're happy to be here tonight and supporting the debate, we're excited about it. Thank you for having us. And with that, I think we're ready to begin. So, we're going to begin with the first question, and James will be calling you by name in order of precedence.
We'd like to come up with a waiting one to see if there's possibly a run that's on. It's already a twenty-four.
So that way we have a fair order insofar as who gets to respond first, sometimes that does make a difference. So each, because we have more than enough questions per candidate, each one of you will get a chance to respond first, and you have two minutes, you will hear James tap the gavel when that two minutes is up, and then we'll go ahead and finish your response. In order to be fair, we won't let one person go on and on and to keep this going in a timely manner. And then each candidate has two minutes to respond as well. So this time, I think we have ample time, so first candidate has two minutes, and then each one of you can give a two-minute rebuttal in which you may answer the question, but also respond to what the other candidates have answered as well. So in your rebuttal, you could answer and also address some of your opponent's statements. Any questions about the format? Okay, then we'll go ahead and begin. So the first question reads, "The Commissioners continue to allow new subdivisions to be built. Our schools are not bursting at the seams," I'm sorry, "our schools are bursting at the seams, and they are also not giving the Sheriff's Office more manpower to patrol. How do you plan to address this in the near future?" So I'll read it one more time. "The Commissioners continue to allow new subdivisions to be built. Our schools are bursting at the seams, and they are also not giving the Sheriff's Office more manpower to patrol. How do you plan to address this in the near future?"
Mr. Olson, you have to write up first your response.
Good evening. Do I need to stand? I am Joe Olson, a candidate for Commissioner for Hope County. If you look at my platform or have seen it already, my three main concerns are new high school, and that is to offset the growth in the county. The high school that we have, it running over at the seam has already been stated. Teachers pay, we seek to gain better salaries while teachers might maintain them in Hope County. And then we have public service, public safety. As has already been stated, the county has grown by leaps and bounds, and yet the Public Service Department has not expanded. That's an issue that we need to address directly and very soon. The safety of everyone is what attracts people and businesses to our community. We feel that, and I feel that, as a Commissioner, these are three components that we need to sit down, discuss, and make it work. There's no such thing as it can't happen. If we work together as a unit, we can build a new high school because it is needed, we can supplement teachers' pay, and when I say teachers' pay, that includes assistants, bus drivers, and all in that category, and of course, safety. You cannot feel comfortable doing anything in this county or anyplace else if you don't feel safe doing it. So yes, we need to expand in all these areas.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, you have your next question.
Thank you. My name is Lonnie Baldwin, I am your candidate for Hope County Commissioner. I would address these concerns first in terms of housing, I think that goes back to your planning. First you want to know is there a need for more houses in order to address those issues, and when planning to, when you sit down and you agree with these developers in developing these subdivisions, you must keep in mind of safety for our public safety, our schools, and that goes back to planning. I feel in terms of housing, you only build them if you need them, and in terms of safety, that's always going to impact growth, and during your planning period, you should always keep in mind when you rely on these developers or whoever should come into our county, growth is very important, school is very important, growing our economy is important, and public safety is important. But it's also important to address the needs of our citizens, which is first growing our economy, and we can do that by creating an environment that fosters good-paying, substantial jobs that would reward employers and workers alike. We also can make good decisions in terms of future growth here in terms of safety and our building, but it's important that we address concerns within our school before we talk about building a school, that's just my opinion. I think one of our greatest challenges today for educators is the achievement gap between white and minority kids. We must do better in that area. And we also must make education a priority again by keeping our community involved. It's very imperative that we do long-term planning when we're doing this, when we're sitting down with these developers, or our Sheriff's Department in terms of our safety.
I am sorry, you guys all can have your next question.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Leach, you have your first question. Good evening. I am Commissioner James Leach. I have to tell you that I was born and raised in Rayford, Hope County, and I also must tell you that I used to walk the street all the time in Hope County and the city of Rayford. What I'm trying to say is, I'm from the city, but the city of Rayford. It's good to be here today. You asked us what will we do, we will continue to do smart planning as we're doing. We have to think about as the need, we do have great needs, we always have great needs in Hope County. Yes, we are growing. We are trying to grow commercial. As you grow commercial, it brings dollars. This is one reason we now have our wastewater plant in place, that is bringing commercial to us. That's dollars, it's not using those dollars to send children to school or anything else. We can invest those dollars into our school system, into public safety. That's our plan as we continue to grow. As we continue to grow, we have to also think about tax rate. We don't want our county, so we run out of business because the tax rate is too high. Must keep in mind to build a new high school today will cost you about nineteen cent on your tax rate. We have a seventy-five cent tax rate today, adding another nineteen cent to that tax rate, that'll give you about ninety-four cent tax rate. I think our seniors and others would not be able to afford that tax rate, so we have to continue to grow commercial and grow those areas, and let the developers build homes, that we can continue to tax those homes, so that we can give our school system what they need and deserve, we can give public safety what they need and what they deserve. Smart planning, you have a board in place that's doing that, we continue to do smart planning, yes, we is growing, we're getting better every day. As we grow, we make the best decision with the information that is available at the time. Are we perfect? No. Will it ever be perfect? No. Will we do our best? Yes.
Mr. Baldwin, you have your next question. Mr. Wright, you have your first question.
I'm Bobby Wright, I'm running for reelection for County Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come here and say a few words to you this afternoon. We'll take up the subdivisions and things first. We have a lot of rules and regulations in place about building the subdivisions and that type thing. We have a cost of each lot such that the subdivisions help support theirselves, not coming money out of the taxpayers' pocket. And you've got to have house tops or new growth before you bring retail sales. Retail sales is where we get the money to do the rest of the things that we need in the county, and I think we're moving forward with that. If you look back last year, our fund balance was about eight point one percent. We made a bunch of department heads mad because we cut the budget down rather than raising the taxes out of sight, we took and tightened our belt and did what we had to do to accomplish what we need. You talk about the fund balance, that regulates how much interest and stuff you have to pay, how you can borrow money. I'm happy to say is up to seventeen point seven percent. We added about four point seven million dollars to our fund balance this one year. I know you can take the sheriff over there with public safety and say, whoa, y'all were tight on me this year. I agree, we were tight on him, but it wasn't only him, it was everybody in the county we had to be tied on. As far as going back to the school situation, I'm a strong supporter of schools. I've been on the County Commission for sixteen years, we built three new schools, one of them is the most green school in the nation. Before that, I spent ten years on the school board. We built two middle schools while I was at the school board. That's five new schools at the time I've been in office. Now, I didn't do this by myself, you know, the board consists of five people.
Sorry, that is all the time you have to respond.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And now we'll have two minute rebuttals to the same question.
Mr. Leach, you have your right of first response.
I have mine.
You don't have a rebuttal? Okay. Mr. Baldwin, you have your first response.
My question to Mr. Wright is, all of those houses that you're saying that you're building that's sitting in our county, I think before we consider even any more growth of housing, we should always look at our foreclosure rates for this area before we even consider any more growth. You're talking about now that we can't secure those people, we're not offering any amenities to them in terms of all of this growth, basically these people complaining, not so much to the lower taxes, but it's just they are not getting anything for the taxes that's been accepted from them. So my question to you is, how does that impact our revenues if these houses are sitting there when these people are gone and left them? Who pay the taxes on them? And how did that impact future growth there? Could you explain that, please?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to answer your question. As far as the taxes, the banks or whoever repossesses the property, they're going to keep the taxes up. The taxes are going to be paid, or there's a lien on them to which time that the taxes are paid. And these new houses you're talking about, they're the things that help bring the growth to the county, they help the things that bring the money to do the extra schools that we need to build in Hope County, to do the law enforcement, they help us bring back the improvements that need to be made in Hope County. Thank you.
Mr. Olson, you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, yes, it is a question. The Commissioners has explained that they've built four, five schools in the county in the last several years, and I've been in Hope County for thirty years, a high school was needed then. It's good to have these other schools, but I think the high school in the county has been the greatest need, why have we neglected not to do something about the new high school?
I think that the school board would tell the Board of Commissioners what they need and the type of school they need. The Board of Commissioners appropriate the money for the school. I don't think the school board come to us for a new high school, they come to us for addition at the high school that's present sitting in Hope County. So the Board of Commissioners don't go out and say that we need to build a high school and this is the place we're going to build it. That a far delay with the school board. So if the school board come to us, which they have not come to us, we're for a high school, then we're not even going to build a high school.
Okay, Mr. Wright, do you have any response to the question?
Yeah, I'd like to say that maybe they're not taking into consideration the three-hundred-and-fifty students that are going to San Hill Hope, they get two years of college education free, and they haven't rode by and looked at the two new buildings that are at San Hill Hope. That's not a new high school, but it takes pressure off the high school that we got now. And I realize sometime in the near future, we're going to have to have a new high school. That's the reason we're trying to make the plans that we're making. When the school board asked us to do it, we'll have our shopping place. Thank you.
Can I respond there? I'm not such an advocate of building a new school, I think it's imperative that we fix the problem that we have there. I mean, it's been noted that our superintendent's been noted for top superintendent in the state, but then according to Department of Public Instruction, we do have failing schools here in Hope County. I'm for more funding for schools for after-school, even the mental problem for kids three to six years old. And I also would be for teachers and more administrators to develop a model that would help better identify students that who qualify for special education services. It's imperative we get that right. Thank you.
Leach, you have any further questions? Okay. We will now move on to the next topic of questioning.
There are so many segments of the county that don't have connection to the sewer system, while new houses and communities are being built right in the same area that offer connection for them but not the existing houses. How can this be and how do you fix that? So one more time, there are still many segments of the county that don't have connection to the sewer system, while new houses and communities are being built right in the same area that offer connection for them but not the existing houses. How can this be and how do you fix that?
Mr. Leach, you have your right of first response.
Well, that's a very good question, and that is one that we also work and seek answers. When you go to borrow money to build a wastewater plant, LGC will not loan you money to build dry lines in the ground. You have to have a way to pay for the system you put in. We were spending buying sewage from PWC and also the city of Rayford. We was able to take that and turn it back to our plant so that we could borrow money, sixteen point five million dollars, to build a wastewater plant in order to be able to pay those funds back. That's a start, and a very good start. That plant will continue to grow, we'll continue to build lines, we'll continue to bring on customers, and as we bring them on, I'm sure we'll get to your neighborhood. But we had to have a starting point. So today, we at the starting point of that wastewater plant being in operation, maybe about three months, and it's doing well. We're making money on that plant at this time. As we continue to build, and we're having our engineers to look at ways to go out and get into other areas, and we will continue to do that. It's just a start, it's a baby plant, but it's growing, and we will build. As we continue to borrow money to build more lines, LGC will look at how in the means of us, how can we pay for these lines that's in the ground? If there's an area in our county that wants sewage in the area and there's enough revenues, we'll be able to go there and build lines to come to you. That's the future of Hope County, it's a good start, it looks good. That's what's going to bring commercial growth, that's what's going to bring the dollars we need to build schools for public safety and anything else we need to do. That's a very good question, Hope County's on the move, we are so blessed to have this plant in operation so that we can come to your neighborhood with sewage, so look out, we's on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Mr. Wright, you have your next question.
Again, I thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. Some of the things that James didn't tell you about the sewer system, we were able to acquire four and a half million dollar grants from USDA, which we don't have to pay back. We were able to borrow a million dollars for Alumia Electric for ten years at no interest. All of these helped the folks that own sewer, and as all of you know, the only ones that pay for the sewer are the ones that's using sewer. And you know, Hope County just getting into sewer business, USDA won't loan you any money until you prove you've got the customers to pay for it. You can't say we're going to add a thousand customers over here, that doesn't count, it's just the customers that you presently have. And as we build up a fund balance in there, we'll be able to extend it to a lot more folks. We borrowed what they would let us borrow at the time we put it in and went as far, but first we had to get our customers to the plant. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, you have your right of next question.
Thank you for that question. It makes good common sense for us to continue to grow our infrastructure because to think of all the jobs that it can and will create, but it's imperative that we still go back to that long-term planning, how we're going to plan our future for tomorrow here in Hope, and it entails our business sector. But in order for us to really bring in good, substantial, good-paying jobs, we must still rely on our Chamber of Commerce. Our Chamber of Commerce is a vital part of our business success in bringing businesses in here, but in the meantime, we still must develop a model in terms of how we can nurture those incoming businesses, and that would equate to retaining them. It makes good sense to continue to grow our infrastructure, but in terms of the sewer, sewer is great, but I think this something should have probably had been done ten years ago, and that goes back to new ideals, new industry, and that's why it's good that we continue to grow in those areas, and it can only make us better at what we do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson, you have your right of next question.
I agree with what my three constituents have already said. The sewer system or the wastewater plant that's been put in place and that is growing, I think as leaders in the county now, we've got to try and sell that to everyone because from my understanding, it's not going to be mandatory. But we've got to sell it to those citizens, to all the citizens whom can afford, and it's not going to cost a lot to afford it. And of course, you know, the more the citizens who tap into it, then the easier it's going to be for everyone who joins, but I think we just have got to sell that product, it's in the beginning stages. And if we do our job as Commissioners and sell it, then it'll work, and we will all benefit from that.
Thank you. Mr. Leach, you have your right of first rebuttal?
I have one.
Okay. And then, Mr. Olson, you have your right of next rebuttal?
Sure.
You have the right to respond next, okay? Mr. Wright, any further? Mr. Baldwin?
On to the third question. Currently, the Animal Control Department falls under the County Commissioners. In other North Carolina counties, animal control falls under the direction of the county sheriff. How do you, as a candidate, feel about changing the status quo? Currently, the Animal Control Department falls under the County Commissioners. In other North Carolina counties, animal control falls under the direction of the county sheriff. How do you, as a candidate, feel about changing the status quo?
Mr. Baldwin, you have your right of first response.
Thank you. I look at it as it's a responsibility of the county to manage that, but if it lies straight on the sheriff, it might be something that you might want to reassess or might revisit due to the fact that all the responsibilities that our Sheriff's Department have now, maybe that's just something else that we might want to revisit and consider. Putting it under another leadership that can pay more attention to what's going on with it, and maybe in the future, if it's a disaster that happened enough, it won't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, you have your right of next rebuttal.
County Commissioners, Sheriff's Department, I always say that we ought to work together. I still think it should be the responsibility of the County Commissioners, working with the Sheriff's Department, perhaps they could join forces, they could better monitor it, and then the burden won't be so great on any one of us or any one of these parties. Working together is what makes things work, okay? And ultimately, the County Commissioners will be the one that's responsible for funding and for the upkeep and the ins and outs of it. So why not work together as a unit and make this happen?
Thank you. Mr. Wright, you have your right of next question.
I think if you look in the paper a little bit, you can see that our sheriff has enough jobs right now, that we don't want to put any undue burdens on our sheriff. The things that we can handle in-house without having to bother him about, I think that's what the County Commissioners are trying to do. And we don't look at it as hurting the sheriff, we look at it as if we were helping the sheriff. And that's the approach that we have taken in the past, and maybe the future, there might be other things brought to our attention that we weren't aware of at the time, but I think it's working fairly good like it is now. Thank you.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Leach, you have your right of next question.
I love this ideal, Sheriff, I'd give it to you tonight. I think it's a great ideal, I welcome the ideal. I have no problem whatsoever given our responsibility. So Sheriff, you got my vote, welcome to it tonight, very good question, but again, we need to work together to make it happen, we need to really protect those and things that are not able to protect themselves, and we will. And we think animals need help, they're not able to speak for themselves, and they're not able to protect themselves. And I think anyone or anything that's not able to protect themselves, it is our job to do so. All of us have a responsibility and obligation to protect everything that God has made. So very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Mr. Baldwin, you have your right of first rebuttal?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Olson? Mr. Wright? Mr. Baldwin?
My concern that surrounds public safety is that organizations and agencies that consist of public safety, and it's not just our law enforcement agencies, our emergency management, fire department, rescue squad, and emergency medical service. So you might want to go back and revisit and look at their responsibilities. So you might wanna go back and revisit and look at their responsibilities along with the sheriff's responsibilities due to the fact, if the sheriff's plate is loaded for protecting us, then maybe we should consider some other agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Does anyone else have a response? Okay. Then we're gone then.
As a commissioner, how important are the county's recruiting and hiring policies? As a commissioner, how important are the county's recruiting and hiring policies?
Mr. Wright, do you have a right of first of all? Who's that? Mr. Wright, do you have a right of?
I think the commissioners have worked a long time, and I think you can ask one of the former commissioners, Gene Powell over here, that many a time that we've had discussions trying to figure out what is best for the county. And I think we have a lot of good policies in place, and as long as we follow those policies, I think the county will continue to be in good shape. Thank you.
Wright, uh, Mr. Lee, do you have a right of next of all?
I think Mr. Wright is correct, but we need to continue to update policies and look at them. It's something that you have to do yearly, update, make some changes. It's very important to us. They are number one priority. Customer service is what we do. That's who we are. That's what we want to offer to all of our citizens. So policies being in place, make sure that we follow them, make sure that our citizens have the best than any other county. As looking through North Carolina, checking other counties, their policies, how they do things, I'm proud to stand here tonight and say, the Hope County is one of the greatest county in the state of North Carolina for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Austin, do you have a further next of all?
Hiring qualified people, qualified people, personnel. Allow them to do what they have been assigned to do. No micromanaging. And then if they're not up to performance, then follow the rules and the regulation, the guideline that you have in place. We have them, we just need to follow them.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Baldwin, do you have a further?
Thank you. One thing, I take higher education as a, as an industry growth in itself. And when you wanna go out and recruit folks, you want the best people in place. But you also wanna try to, uh, be true to the people of your county. We ask our children to go out and be at their best in whatever their endeavors are, and we expect them not only to go in some other community to exercise those skills, but we would love for them to come back here. But it starts here at our HR department. They must be inclined to the folks that we have out there, our children that we sent off to be at their best. And it's imperative that we have our HR department in place that recognize talent, not from no matter where they're from. But we also wanna keep in mind that it's imperative that we invest in research and technology in our town so that it can bring new ideas and new industry, and that would only come with the best and the brightest that we recruit. We must take that very serious when it come to meeting the needs of our citizens here in Hope County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Lee, you do have right of first of all?
No.
Mr. Wright, do you have a reply? Mr. Austin? Mr. Baldwin? Okay. So on to the next question.
What are, what are your thoughts on transparent government and how do you relate them to Hope County? So what are your thoughts on transparent government and how do you relate them to Hope County?
Mr. Austin, we do have right of first of all?
I feel that... Could you phrase that question once more?
Sure. What are your thoughts on transparent government and how do you relate them to Hope County?
That's what I thought. A government is for the people, the citizens who put us in office, the citizens who do not vote for us. Anything that goes on should be communicated to the citizen of the county. It's not what I think, but the government should be transparent so that any one of you could come and talk to us. There are specific ideas or things that has been brought to my attention that the, uh, people don't feel, citizens don't feel sometimes that they're gonna be heard. I suggest that the commissioners or those in leadership, uh, do like the sheriff department does sometime, uh, have seminars, educate the people on what's going on in the county, what's best. I just think that we need to be more transparent, that we can be approachable, and that we communicate to community those things that they need to know.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Wright, do you have a right of next of all?
I think a good portion of you know that the commissioners are required to go to ethics class each year. And through these ethics classes, we learn the proper procedure of what we have to do to make all of our meetings open to the public, and we invite the public to come. Few of the faces here, I see at the county commissioners meeting, we always welcome everybody to come to commissioners meeting. The more people that take part in our local government, the better government we're gonna have in the county. And I thank you, and we try to make our meetings as open as possible. We have very few closed sessions, and they're usually about personnel or something like that, or new industry or that type of stuff coming in that eventually be made public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Baldwin, do you have a further?
Thank you. I think it's important that you be able to dialogue with the people you serve, try to keep an open line of communication with them, but on the same token, trust is very important. And it's important that we know, I have no doubt of what our elected officials are up to or what they're doing. And transparency is very good because it lets people know that whatever the business of the people that you are doing, you have no reason to hide anything. You should be upfront and forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Lee, do you have a right of further?
Great. There's some great answers tonight, and all of them is our opinion. We all have one, you know? Would have been some very good answers tonight. I just think and feel when you hire the best people, ask them to hire the best, put them all in place, let them work together. Ask them to follow the policy and treat them all the same. I think if it's, if it's the floor sweeper, you hire the best floor sweeper. You hire them so they can sweep so well. They sweep the floor better than the living, dead, or the unborn. The manager ought to be willing to grab a broom and sweep the floor if necessary. When you're dealing with our citizens, we treat them with customer service. Make that happen, follow policies, always follow up on that, be good to your citizen, and let them know that the board of commissioners is very concerned about them. I just feel with the best people in place, and they want to hire the best people in place, that we all can work together to have a great place to live. Thank you.
Uh, does any, uh, Mr. Lee, do you have a right of first of all?
Do you have?
Okay. Mr. Austin? Mr. Wright? Mr. Baldwin?
Well, now to your two-minute conclusion speeches, and, uh, James has the order of presence.
Uh, I'd just like to say that those conclusion speeches can touch on any topics of the debate or anything else you feel could perhaps have more position. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, do you have a right of first conclusion?
I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce again for having me and for inviting me here. I born and raised in Hope County, graduate of high school here, served in the military here. I want to do a special thanks to all our veterans and the people that's keeping us safe. It's imperative that we grow our economy, and we can only do that by the environment that we create. We must enrich our schools, and that's by identifying those special need kids, children, I'm sorry. And in our public safety, there are several department agencies that relates to our public safety. We must take that in consideration and not just the sheriff department. And, um, last and not least, I, in my platform, I wanted to build, or suggest building a school, not a school, but a community rec center for our children in this county. I think there's a lot of children that left home alone to find their own recreation, their own companionship. And these children needs to know that there's a sense that somebody care about them. And I think by building this, this rec center, I think it would not only provide programs for fitness, social recreation, it also would address issues as team, team issues, it would also address gang violence, and it would also address self-worthiness for our children. It's imperative that we find the funds for this, and I think it would make good sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you. I'd like to take another opportunity to tell you thank you for inviting us here tonight and to ask you for a vote. I'm running for county commissioners again, and I certainly would appreciate at least one of your votes. And the things in Hope County, uh, I've lived in Hope County all my life. I married my wife and for 52 years. I've got three sons, and I got grandchildren. And all of them have gone through the Hope County school system. My wife is a retired teacher. She taught a mentally handicapped class, and I always tell her, I gave her the training for that. So, you know, you've got to have a good sense of humor to get across the things that you want to get. And we've got some good folks running for the position tonight, and I wish them all well. Uh, but again, I'm Bobby Wright. I'm running for reelection to county commissioner, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Lee?
Again, thank you so much to the chambers for inviting us, and let me thank you to you for coming tonight. I want you to know me for who I am and not for what you heard. Know me for what I've done, for my label. If you look around Hope County, my word speak for me. That is the best thing. It will continue to speak for me. I'll continue to label, do what's right, what's best for all of God's children. I am a city boy, born, raised, and living in the city all my life, the city of Rayford. I call it home. It always will be home. Has I been perfect? No. Will I ever be perfect? No. Will we make some mistake? Yes. When you know better, do we do better? Yes. But you can believe this, the war that we're serving on had made the best decision with the information that was available. That's who we are. That's what we do. That's what we continue to do. Hope County is a great place. We love it. 23 years ago, Hope County was ranked number 99 counties out of 100. Tonight, I'm proud to stand and say we in mid-60. I think we've done well. I think we will continue to do well. We all believe and have faith in God and our family and all of our citizens. And as long as we do that, that's not but one way to go, and that's up. Thank you for coming. If you vote your conscience, each of you, that's all I can ask of you. If you vote your conscience, it would be hard to miss James Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Austin?
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. You have heard since I've been in this campaign, my platform. But at the end of the day, what it all boils down to on election day is whom do you trust? I look every one of you in the eye, and I'll tell you, you will never regret voting Joe Austin as one of your county commissioners. I promise you that I will work hard at all times for the citizens and for the betterment of Hope County. You can trust me to do that which is right. On March 15th, I would appreciate a vote for Joe Austin as your next county commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
That concludes the commissioner debate round. Should we give them all a hand? Then, per the organizers, we have time for a short, um, break. I, I believe there's coffee back there. Should we reconvene and say, start back up in five minutes or so?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll take a short five-minute break, and then we'll, we'll turn to the district attorney. Patrick, thank you very much.